Being involved in our meeting today. It's time for our regular scheduled meeting to come to order. Our invocation will be given by Commissioner Perry. Afterwards, the pledge of allegiance will be given by our auditor, Sherlene Larson.
Our dear heavenly Father, we come before this time grateful for the many blessings that Thou bestowed upon us. We're grateful for the moisture we received this past month. And we would pray that Thou will continue to bless us, that we will continue to receive moisture throughout this winter, that we can replenish the lakes and the reservoirs. And we pray that Thou will guide and direct us in thy service as we carry out the business of the people of Boxer County today. And we ask to please bless and watch over all those who reside here and travel through and are here in Boxer County. We ask a special blessing to be upon those who serve us in our community, those who work in in service positions throughout our county and throughout our state. And we ask to please bless them and protect them and let them know we appreciate their service to us. And we ask for these blessings and all of the blessings that those that we need at this time. We say these things in Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Perry, and thank you, Sherlene. Appreciate that. Item C, minutes from October 8th, 2025.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from October 8th of 2025.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to approve the minutes from October 8th, 2025. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, administrative review reports, future agenda items. Anything we need to deal with there?
No, I don't have anything. The Health Department will put that on next one, so.
Okay, great. So, number four, former agenda items. Annie, had something you wanted to talk about?
Annie with the County Attorney's Office. Previously in a meeting, we talked about a grant that the county has received for several of the first responder departments, including the County Attorney's Office, to cover special mental health services for first responders. This included the County Attorney's Office, the court, the CJC, our fire group and EMS, as well as the Sheriff's Department. And we had previously discussed it and somehow two of the contracts didn't get signed. And so, we just wanted to bring it back to your attention so we can get those formally signed.
So, do we get them to you?
Yeah, if you would, that'd be great.
I'd make a motion that we approve signature on those.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to approve the signatures on the first responder contract. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Annie. Emergency management issues. I don't see Mark anywhere. ARPA, LATCF, Sherlene?
Yeah, nothing really new that way. We do have some more spending on ARPA, so we'll just have a very small amount left for 26.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item seven, we'll turn over to Commissioner Perry.
All right. There's a couple parts here I want to talk about. First and foremost, we had a tragic incident happen here in our community not too long ago. And one of our deputies from the Boxer County Sheriff's Department was intricately involved in this situation. And because of his actions, we clearly believe that he saved lives of other law enforcement officers and other people because of the actions that he took that night along with his dog Azula. So, we want to recognize Deputy Mike Allred and his dog Azula as our employees of the month. But before I get to that, there's another thing that Deputy Allred did that we want to make sure we recognize as well because that is the primary thing. But there's another piece that he also did because he didn't just save lives once, but he's constantly trying to save lives because he got a bunch of thank you cards and a bunch of get well cards and some really nice things from some of the elementary kids, especially from the kids out at Promontory School of Expeditionary Learning. And so, he went out there and they invited a whole bunch of law enforcement and fire folks to go out and be recognized as public heroes, and he got to speak. And as he spoke, gave a great talk to the kids and encouraged them to stay safe and do good things. And at the very end, he challenged all of them to eat their vegetables. And that took off in our county. And so, a lot of people have had to eat vegetables in this county, including he and Azula. But we wanted to make sure we recognize him as our deputy, as our employee of the month for Boxer County, along with his dog Azula, and we got him some vegetables. So, come on up, Deputy. I don't know if Azula will eat them or not.
Oh, she will.
Yeah. She will. We're gonna take a smile. Yeah, we'll get your veggies there for you. Oh, you're the veggie deputy now. Okay. Congratulations. And just so the public's aware, Deputy Allred is also going to be recognized by the Utah Department of Public Safety next week. On the 30th of October, they're recognizing his actions as well because they realize, as a state agency, what a great impact he had, not only just in our community, but statewide in the efforts and actions that he and his dog took that night. So, we're grateful for him and all of our deputies and everybody who works for us in this county especially. And that's why we like this employee of the month thing because we feel like it gives us an opportunity to let people know the great work that our employees are doing. So, thanks for what you do and don't think you have to stick around, but you can if you want to, so.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Perry, and thank you, Deputy. We appreciate that. Okay, item eight. Utah Inland Port Authority Annual Report, Stephanie Pack. I'm sorry, Stephanie, look what you're doing to our... I'm just kidding. I'm just teasing.
They'll miss out.
All right, I had a few slides.
There we go.
Excellent, excellent. My name is Stephanie Pack. I'm with the Utah Inland Port Authority. Thank you so much, commissioners, for allowing me to come and present. This is our annual report for 2025. This is the second year we've been working with the county on this project area. We first created this project area in August of 2023. And we are really excited about some of the progress we've made since we've began this partnership. Go ahead and to the next slide. Keep moving forward. You know, we have worked really hard with the communities here in the county to support economic growth that we have seen here in Utah. Go ahead and move to the next slide. Wanted to provide some information on some of the highlights from this year. We had the ribbon cutting for the Lake Shore Learning Project. That is a massive win for the state of Utah, not just for the county. This provided, I think, at the time of the ribbon cutting, they had already hired 400 people for that facility. And they have just been an incredible asset to the community. They've invested over $200 million into the community as of today. And we're really thrilled about the partnership that we've had from Lake Shore Learning. As you can see in that photo, we had not just representatives from here in Garland, here in Boxer County. We also had our state delegation represented. This is such a big win for Utah and we're thrilled to see what they've done so far. We also were excited to hear the announcement from Nucor. They have a new business segment that they brought into the community, and that's their Towers and Structures segment. This was a competitive project. They were looking at this expansion in multiple states. And I think it really speaks to the business environment that we have here, the community involvement from Brigham City, that they made the choice to invest in their project here in Boxer County. This is going to bring another $200 million of capital expenditure to the community. We're working really closely with Brigham City right now to... You know, they've already started permitting that project. Dirt's already moving on that site. And so, we're really excited to see Nucor come and create some new jobs here, really double down on their investment here in the community. And I think it just speaks to the wonderful experience they've had working here. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So, we had our first trigger here in Boxer County. We triggered the Lake Shore Learning Project. And essentially what that means is that kind of starts our 25-year timeline for that project area. The flexibility of our project really allows us to trigger parcel by parcel. And what that means is, you know, we don't have to trigger any of these areas until they're ready for development. And so, that really maximizes the amount of value we can add to these projects. But having that first trigger for the Lake Shore Learning Project is a big milestone for our project area. And we look forward to doing the same with the Nucor project, once that's completed, and any future development that we see going. Going back to a previous slide, we have over 20 active recruitment projects in our pipeline today here in the county. We're working really closely with the local communities on identifying projects that are going to be a good fit for the county. We have a very low unemployment rate here in the county, which is a good problem to have. But it does make it challenging to recruit large employers here in the county. And so, we're being very mindful about what we can offer these communities in terms of employment. The employment that we have here in the county is really robust. They're a very highly skilled, highly trained workforce. But we want to make sure that the projects that we're bringing into the county are a good fit and will be additive to what the county wants to see in terms of economic growth. So, I think those were the big highlights that I wanted to bring to the commission today. We are really excited for what we have coming down the pike here in the project area. One thing I wanted to mention is we are in our annual amendment cycle for the project area. We are going to be adding 178 acres into the project area in Willard City. So, Willard City passed a resolution to come into the project area. And they have 180-acre site right in between the interstate and the UP main line that they've identified as an industrial area that they want to help build out in that community. We're working with Millstream Partners, who is developing that site. They are the same developer who developed the Lake Shore Learning Project. So, they have experience here in the community. They have a proven track record to be able to bring in good investment into that community. And there's already a number of really promising projects that are considering that site today. So, we look forward to partnering with Willard City on that additional acreage. And we're excited to be helping support them. If you go to... I'm not sure if I'll have the... I'm not sure if I'll have the map of that new site in Willard on these slides.
Is that the one you want?
I think they're not on this slide deck, unfortunately.
Oh, okay.
But that's okay, that's just fine. But we can deliver those to the commission at a later date so you can see the map of that new expansion area.
Right there.
Any questions from the commission on our annual report?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One is, I know when we came and Inland Port presented this to us, two things that they said they were going to bring to the table. One was rail. And we'd like to know more about what you're doing with rail. And then, the other obviously is we build obviously manpower and people that work is good. But one of the biggest issues we're facing in the state is power, electricity. And so, I'd like to kind of maybe get an idea of what Inland Port is bringing to the table for infrastructure in those two areas, specifically rail and power, and what they can be doing here in Boxer County to assist us with that.
That's a great question, and we're really excited. We've had some important milestones when it comes to rail here in the state of Utah recently that I think are going to be... They're going to be relevant to what you're working on here in the county. One of those is, we just announced that Burlington Northern, BNSF, has established an intermodal hub in Salt Lake County. And that intermodal presence is the first time in Utah's history that we have a second Class 1 railroad operating here in the state. Traditionally, Union Pacific has had a monopoly here in the state, being the only Class 1 rail provider. But having BNSF making such a significant investment in Salt Lake City really does add a competitive advantage for us as a state. We now have two Class 1 railroads serving Utah. So, that means more options for companies here in the state for service. And it also means maybe more competitive pricing for the companies that are utilizing UP's services as well. So, that is a significant milestone for the state of Utah, historic really, for us to be able to have two Class 1 rail operators here. We fully anticipate that BNSF will continue to expand in its service as it kind of puts its foothold into the Utah market. So, we're really excited about that. Union Pacific also has announced that it is merging with Norfolk Southern, which is another Class 1 rail operator, but they operate mostly on the East Coast. And so, once that merger gets approved, it'll likely take about a year for that merger to proceed forward. But once that's done, Union Pacific will be a transcontinental Class 1 rail operator. And they have all of the service that they provide here in Utah that will now be transcontinental. So, that means a significant, significant shift in the amount of service that they'll be able to provide for their customers here in Utah. And it also opens up customers on the East Coast that could then be interested in coming here. So, the fact that the county has such extensive rail-served assets here in the county could mean some really big opportunities for the rail users that are here, but also for us to be able to recruit more rail users in the future. As you know, here in the county, we are very reliant on trucking. Trucking is a really important asset for the community. We want to see the rail assets here be better utilized. And so, our mission really is to recruit some rail users. I think that the Nucor expansion, you know, they're going to be obviously leveraging rail pretty significantly. And one of our initiatives that we're going to be working on with the communities here in the county is working with customers today that primarily rely on truck and see if we can't talk them into shifting over to rail usage. And one thing that we've done in other counties is create transload facilities. So, even if you're not adjacent to a rail line, you can leverage a transload facility to get your products up to the region and then transload it that last mile. So, that's something that we're going to be working on as well. But wanted to make you aware of those updates because they are going to mean significant things for the state of Utah, but also for the county as well.
Well, Commissioner Perry brings up infrastructure, and especially for me, that's one of our big concerns, right? Because we're growing exponentially in Boxer County and the state itself. We did meet with UDOT discussing roads and those type of things. And for me, the big concern that we have is rail's a great thing, but we are getting so much truck traffic. And especially, it's been very notable on I-15 from Brigham City to Tremont. It's just an absolute nightmare. And so, that's one of my big concerns is we talk about infrastructure, roads, rail, and how we're going to manage that as we grow. Another thing that I have big concern about, being the mayor of one of our cities in the county, I'm very concerned about power. How are we going to power all this stuff? And I know as a mayor, that was one of the things that we worked very hard on, was our power portfolio and that type of thing. And so, that is one of our big concerns as well, is power and how to do that, so.
Well, and I'll go ahead and shift to the power conversation. With the Nucor expansion, we're working... One of the biggest things that that Nucor expansion will help the Brigham City finance is a regional substation for the city. And that is a really big benefit of having these project areas is we allow that growth to help pay for that needed infrastructure. You know, it would have been really, really difficult for the city to, you know, foot the bill for that substation on its own. And so, the fact that, you know, the city doesn't have to rely on issuing a bond, doesn't have to rely on increasing rates for their power in order to pay for that infrastructure, we can use the growth that's coming to help pay for it. And so, we are really confident in the tools that the project areas give us to help build out that needed infrastructure. And one thing that we're working on statewide is recruiting energy production here in the state. So, with energy being such a key topic for our growth, you know, we can't grow without having the needed power. We're working really closely on helping support generation all across the state since generation is going to be crucial in order for us to get what we need. Not just infrastructure, right? Not just substations, not just power lines. We need to have generation happening everywhere that power is being used. And so, we're really excited about the tools that we already have here in the community to make sure that, you know, we can let the growth pay for the growth.
So, with this new rail company that you're talking about that's established in Salt Lake, are they going to lay new rail? Are they going to share the rail? What are they going to do?
So, for now, they have track rights that they share with UP. So, the Surface Transportation Board is the governing entity that kind of decides how those track rights get shared. And so, they, you know, BNSF has track rights here in Utah already. They've been utilizing those track rights to, you know, get through the state. We're just excited that they are making more of an investment in their own facilities here in Utah. We're not sure if they're going to be laying new track, but the Surface Transportation Board will determine how much more track rights they'll be able to get as they grow. One thing that we are working on in Twilla County is a new shortline rail that was approved by the Surface Transportation Board last year. They just had a ribbon cutting last month, and that's the first new rail being laid in Utah in over 100 years. And so, that is excellent precedent for us. It means that the Surface Transportation Board has a growth mindset. You know, traditionally, the Surface Transportation Board has been in the business of decommissioning rail. So, the fact that they are rehabilitating old rail lines, that they are permitting new tracks to be laid, means really wonderful things for us in the future. So, we're hopeful that we'll see new rail being built. And as we have demand, as we have need, we can fully expect that if the need arises here in Boxer County, for example, the Surface Transportation Board will respond.
Yeah, so, I remember when we were talking about the inland port. We had quite a discussion before any of this actually took place. And they were talking about rail being the major factor in all of that. But yet here, we have... Somebody's calling. But anyway, here in Tremont, you have a proposed plan, and it's a long ways away from rail. You have a block right there south of the freeway and then another block down here. And it's out there in the middle of all that farm ground, and I don't see any way to get it to the rail. How you can do that?
So, we want to make sure that we provide the tools necessary for smart growth. And so, as we look at areas that are primed for growth, you know, one of the biggest things that we look for is, you know, the zoning. How is this area going to be zoned in the future? What has the community planned for this area? And then, we utilize that plan, you know, we're here to execute on the community's plans, right? We don't have any zoning authority, we don't have any permitting authority. So, we just rely on what the community wants to see happen. And we bring the tools necessary to build the infrastructure that's needed for that area. And so, while we do want to see our project areas have some sort of nexus to transportation logistics, it's not a requirement. You know, we're here to just help the community grow where the community wants to see growth. And we can be flexible, you know? If growth happens there, great, you know, we can utilize it. If growth, you know, doesn't occur, you know, that's something that we don't have to trigger until growth actually happens. So, we're really flexible that way. One thing that we are looking at is identifying an area here in the community that could service as a transload facility. So, an area on the rail line that can be a regional asset. So, any company in the region could get access to rail, even if they're not located directly on the rail line. That way, all of the companies here in Utah can, oh, here in the community, can access the rail even if they're not on the line. And so, we want to work with the companies that are coming to the county, but we also want to work with the companies that are already here and established and make sure that if they can take advantage of rail, they have the opportunity to do so with a regional asset. So, that is something that we're looking at really closely. We've already had conversations with Savage. They are a multimodal logistics company, but they have really significant rail assets throughout the state. And they see a lot of opportunity here in Boxer County for a facility like a transload facility.
Yeah, I know. Most of it's because there's so much open space, which according to the study that was done in our county, people wanted to maintain and preserve farmland, and that's kind of a concern to me. I see this farmland being gobbled up. And I see why it happens because you come in with an inland port that can pay lots of money. And so, people say, I'm through farming, I'm going to sell it for this purpose. And it changes the county. That's a concern to me.
Absolutely. And we are very sensitive to that. We want to make sure that, you know, we're growing in the way the county wants. And so, our goal is to deploy these tools at the community's behest. So, if this is a project or a program that the community wants, then, you know, we'll do things like offer an incentive.
So, you still got to go through the process?
Absolutely. So, any growth that comes through, any incentives that get offered, they need to have the blessing of the local community. That happens long before, you know, we come in and offer anything specific. Similar to tax sharing, right? A tax sharing agreement will need to go through the community. For example, that substation, that tax sharing is going directly to the city who is going to be issuing bonds for those upgrades. So, you know, that is going to help support Nucor, for example. But those funds aren't going directly to Nucor. And that incentive that was offered to Nucor, that was an incentive that the city signed off on. So, we're going to let the communities take the lead on what growth they want to incentivize.
Like Commissioner Bingham, when I was the mayor, we were working with inland port on some things. And we had one area that they were looking at. And that was one of the things that they said that it had to meet three criteria, you know, in rail, the freeway and the airport. That was the three things that needed to meet. And so, like the one that you're talking about, I don't see anything with that. And so, obviously for us, that's a concern. I mean, we just don't want to build something and then have either, number one, it causing problems to our residents or making it to where it's not profitable. And then, they end up closing doors or whatever they need to do. And then, we just have a big facility that's empty in the county, so. But I like Commissioner Bingham and Commissioner Perry, I know, shares the same concerns, so.
Yeah, we'll work really closely with the communities that we're partnering with and we'll incentivize the growth they want to see.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any more questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Hey, thank you.
I'm sorry for making a joke when you come up. I apologize, I'm a joker by nature.
No, I'm very good humored. Thank you.
You're in motion.
I make a motion, we open the public hearing to receive input regarding the annual seasonal road closure ordinance.
I'll second it.
And a motion by Commissioner Vincent and a second by Commissioner Perry to open the public hearing to receive input regarding the annual seasonal road closure. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, I have understood that there is someone here that has a small presentation they would like to make.
Is it attached to this?
Yes, it is.
Let's come at it again, see what happens. You ready, Dan?
Sure. I don't know who to ask, so whoever's prepared. I don't know who to ask, so whoever's prepared. And if you'd introduce yourselves when you start, please.
One, two, you're done.
I know.
I'm Al Gore.
Or Skip.
We don't skip.
By the way, you gave your prayer last year, by the way. And last year-
He does it all the time. We just let, we just let him pray.
Yeah, there you go.
You oughta see him do a rain dance, it's amazing.
Go ahead.
And I'm Russ Lawrence.
Welcome.
So we appreciate your time. Last year's meeting, I thought was great. In fact, I wanna say a little prayer. Commissioner Perry, but you said, "We wanna work with you landlords." And then we sent a real nice letter. Of course, there was a transition between Stan and Tyler. And of course, this year, you were learning your duties. We also had a situation where you lost pretty valuable people. Then you had the fair, so here we are.
It's been a crazy year.
The goal was to try and get together earlier with the Forest Service and so forth, and be all on the same page. But, anyway, concerning, if you wanna pull up that first slide.
Is the mic?
Anyway, what we would like, I know you have seasonal closures of various roads, but we wanna talk specifically about Devil's Gate, Liberty Avon, because the gate is closed on the one side and not on the other. Now, there's, there might be some in the room that dispute the fact that this is an actual seasonal closure. Back in approximately 2000, it was originally called the Shoshone Trail. Box Elder was involved, Cache County was involved, the federal government was involved, and the state of Utah. All players. And at that time, Devil's Gate Valley was closed with a seasonal gate by the Forest Service. During that time, people took the gate off the hinges, and when they do that, they create massive damage for us. But let's, let's go, Kaylee, I talked, or Ashley, I talked to her earlier this year, and she definitely wanted the road to stay closed. It's closed on the east, closed on the west. And if it's not closed on the west, there is no road closure, period, for the Forest Service. And so those two key points are very, very important. And she also would like to get together with the meeting. She's taken Sean Harwood's place, that he retired this, this year. But due to the government shutdown, Ashley could not be here today. Next slide. How'll you talk about this, Russ?
Yeah, so I gotta talk about maps, and I was involved in 2000, actually earlier than that, even when we started all these conversations and, and trails and so forth. And I think there's some confusion on the Willard Peak Road versus the Devil's Gate Road. They are two separate roads, but I think it's really important to notice and, and take note that the Forest Service controls both, both the east and the west sides of where this road originates, and then the private's in the middle. And so, the Forest Service themselves, on their, their roads, that three miles on the east and a little less than a half a mile on the west are seasonally closed, and can be enforced by a $5,000 fine, six months in prison, or both. And that doesn't matter, according to their ordinance, if, if it's even signed or not. But, so, but, but it is. And, so, so anyway, I think that's just the main point, is we really don't have control of this closure, either as private landowners or as the county, 'cause the Forest Service controls the access on both sides.
So what are they telling you?
The Forest Service? Oh, they wanna maintain-
Are they wanting you to close it, or they want you to leave it open?
They want the seasonal closure. They don't wanna close year round, but, yeah, they, they wanna maintain the seasonal closure.
All right, next slide, if you would. This is just a picture on the east side, Liberty Avon. They use open dates. We talk closure dates, that's easier to understand. And, but anyway, that's just a picture there, you can go to the next slide. It depends on when you open that gate, whether it's in the morning or at night, or close it in the morning or night. So basically, we're talking the same thing. On the west side, like I say, the Forest Service put up that green gate, it was there for years. David Ashby would close it every year, along with Willard Basin up in the very top. That was always closed, but for some reason, people kept taking that off the hinges, moved it to the side, and it caused a lot of damage for us, road, roads going through private property. In fact, a few years back, and I have to look at the date, but I had granite construction come up there, give an estimate what it would cost to repair. At that time, they were going out through the Aspens on the Cousins' property, which you're in here today. They created a lot of damage, but just to repair the road, half a mile, the bill was $900,000. That estimate was given to Bill Gilson, and the following week, they were up there and they repaired the road. They kinda cut over into private property, which it is what it is.
So the question is, did you pay the $900,000?
No. That's, that's what you saved it, that's what saved the count.
Dang, we gotta get our invoicing done better.
But it would, it, the bill for that would've been $900,000. And of course, we would've came back to the county and had the county pay it, 'cause they destroyed private property. And that doesn't include restoration of that property. Now, the-
Wait, wait, just a second. You didn't come back to the county because the county destroyed the, the property and the road?
No, the county, the county is supposed to maintain that road.
Is that in a written document somewhere?
That was agreed a long years ago.
And that's what I'm saying, is there, is there a contract? Is there a written agreement?
Danny Beecher made that a Class D road.
Yeah, I know Danny.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if he's gonna remember that, that's what I'm saying, is there something written?
He's gone. But, anyway, bottom line is, a lot of damage on that road. And the sign on the far right, the two poles there, the Forest Service put those in place because they were going around the Forest Service gate, coming down in to access that valley. And actually, a couple motorcycles went through there this year, around that gate, and also came down through that same spot. I put a picture of the steel pole there, because over 25 years, the one inside the gate was rotten, and the church replaced that with a new steel post. And the Forest Service gave permission for the LDS Church to put that gate back up, because somebody had removed the green gate. So that's why it's a red gate, and that was put on by the LDS Church.
The green gate was completely gone?
It was just, yeah, it's just gone.
So was it never locked?
Oh, it was locked, yes. In fact, one year, I remember I, David Ashby put, what they do is they take off the hinges and just put it to the side.
So they, they take off the hinges and let the, the chain that's locked on swivel on that end?
Right. In fact, I have an email I put out this morning, back in 2017, and there was a note there that the county didn't wanna lock on there, because we offered, but the county locked on, private land owner locked, and the Forest Service locked. So that gate was moved to the side.
Okay, I hate to tell you this, we agreed to three minutes. How much longer is your presentation gonna go?
This, this concerns all the landowners. It's about done. Next slide. Now, that just shows the seasonal closure signs that actually are down where Forest Service 168ers are in within the valley, within private property. Next slide. Like I said, we already talked about David Ashby putting the lock every year. We can go to the next one. You wanna say anything?
Yeah, so I, I think just, you know, one thing that we would ask as landowners, we, we wanna be very cooperative with the county, and have always wanted to be. And the road was maintained relatively well, you know, over the years, until like the past five or six years. I don't know when the last time a blade was put back on it. But the road passed the church camps, and the only reason it's really good past the church camps is because they'd done maintenance. But, but past that, up to the Forest Service, where our property lies, it's very dangerous, it's very treacherous. I almost rolled a tractor last year on it because of the, the condition that it's in. There's individuals that have SUVs, I mean, you, you used to be able to drive, actually even a passenger car, all the way to our property. And, and you certainly can't do that now. You risk a lot of damage to your vehicle, or getting stuck, or even rolling off the road. So, we would just ask that it gets regularly maintained, because we, like my sisters, they can't get up there with their vehicles. They have SUVs, which are four-wheel drive, but they, they really do not feel safe, and are scared to drive this road. The other issue is, you can't pass on this road. A Class D road should be about 20 feet wide, according to the specs in the county. And, and you can't pass. I've been on some of these really rough spots with a trailer, and I have a well-built trailer. I built it to take a lot of, you know, to, to go down in some really bad spots, where I actually go down on Fillmore. But, but anyway, people are, you know, the public comes down the other side, they're asking me to back up with a trailer on a slope with a rutted road. I can't do that. Now, if it was wide enough, we could, you know, safely pass people by. So, you know, we're just, we're just asking for safety, for our own access, 'cause the public is ripping it up. I mean, the county is allowing the public to go on this road. And with these new machines that are out there, I mean, four-wheelers were one thing, but these new razors with the massive tires and everything, they fly up these roads, and they're kicking stuff everywhere, rocks are being dislodged, and we're getting some serious ruts, and, and it, it's, it's not a good road.
Did you say this road connects in Avon? Is that what you said?
Yes.
And that, and that road in Avon is a US Forest Service road? Did you say that?
The, the Avon, Liberty Avon Road belongs to the counties, both Cache and Weaver Counties.
Okay. Yeah, I thought you said that it was a Forest Service road, and that's why they closed it.
Where the closure is coming over to-
Yeah, this, this comes off of the Liberty Avon.
Okay.
So-
Now, the picture on the right, just, just let you know, that picture on the right is a new road that was put in, up through the private property, because they couldn't pass the one just to the left of that. I mean, that's just an example, we've got tons of other pictures. But let's go on to the next slide. I mean, this is important. This sign also is, right there, that sign was also up there, and that was removed this spring. That actually shows the seasonal closure dates. Somebody took it down, he sent emails to the county, asking who took this down, was it the public? Was it the county? Who took that down? I think that helped-
Who put the sign up?
Yeah.
County. Or Box Elder.
Okay. 'Cause I mean, it has, the only, only people who put up a sign white with black lettering has to be a regulatory sign, so.
Yeah, that was Box Elder, but it's, it's now gone. But that also helped condition the public that it was closed during that seasonal closure. And that one, let's go to the next one. I wanna do this fast, though. The main gate, seasonal gate, counted state property down there. This past year, people went around, they created a whole new road. And I go up to the DNR, talk to them about, they may have gotten with Darren, they may have gotten with Darren, but I talked to them, they fixed it, in fact, he sent me pictures of it, here's, here's what we've done, it's done. And, but if that was signed correctly, the main gate, which it used to be, it used to be a true seasonal closure, and had all the signs, there's no signs on it. When you don't sign it, the public doesn't know, it creates a lot of confusion for the public, animosity, and you don't need that, and we don't need that. One other thing, too-
The sign you're, where you're talking about, is the Willard Peak Road, the one that starts going out of Manaway, that's the road, that's the gate?
That's below Dock Flat.
Yep.
That should have some signs on it, about seasonal closure. Another thing that is a prob- a problem there, there's a, basically the four-foot gate, 50-inch gate, that's always left open. That allows four-wheelers to go up there anytime. They have a right through there, evidently, but you've blocked all, we, as landowners, even the church, has, has not been given a key to that gate. Now, Selman's have a key to their gate, and the landowners over on this side should also have a key. Same, same thing.
So where is that gate located?
That is the main gate, down below Dock Flat, the big, heavy steel one.
The reason I've smiled is I can't even tell you how many hundreds of miles I've ridden on horseback, because people don't close gates.
Yeah.
They don't care.
Yeah. You mentioned that last year.
And, and I'm not sure that that's government officials' problem, that's a people problem.
Yeah, yeah. It's amazing what the public will do, but allowing the public to go through that gate and actually blocking landlords, even on, when a seasonal closure, that's not right. That is not right. Anyway, that's all I have. Some other members might wanna say a few things?
I'm sorry, our time's up.
Any questions at all?
I do have a few. You made a, you made some recommendations. Can you summarize that on a piece of paper and hand it to me?
How about, how about I send it to an email?
That'd be grand, send it to me on an email.
And I'll follow up with the one last year also.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it, Skip.
Appreciate it.
Item 10, Commissioners. Well, I'm sorry, that is public hearing. Anybody else wanna come and speak?
I'll make a motion, we-
We're talking about road closure.
Somebody just wanted to come in.
I'm Todd Thompson, I'm the camp manager for the Manaway Valley Camps. Let me just revert back to the conversation regarding the signage. Does the commission know who, who removed the sign at the Devil's Gate split? That was a county gate, a county sign? And the insight as to who or why that was taken down?
I'm not aware of the details.
Neither am I.
Let me just reiterate, maybe, and expand upon the point that Skip made, in that if, if there is no signage in place, it creates a lot of contention and confusion with the traveling public. Personally been involved with some of that contention, and the fact that, you know, I reestablished the red gate at the, at the White Rock Cut Off. But in the midst of that, the traveling public created a little contentious situations with me, and which I tried to dissipate, and really just said, "Refer to the sign." And that helped tremendously, once they could walk back and see, "Oh, this is a, this is a regulated closure, it's not anything personal between me and him, it's regulated closure." But without signage in place like that, that reference wouldn't have been able to take place. Once again, the, the signage at the Manaway Valley, at the first, on the Willard Peak Road, near the parking lot, doesn't exist. But when that gets locked and chained down, it just creates a lot of confusion and contention. So I guess I would submit to the commission that we reestablish the signage, to try to eliminate the contention, the confusion with the traveling public, as well as give us a little bit of clout, I guess, as we try to, landowners try to enforce the closure. Those are some of the concerns that we have at the camp as well. We try to be good stewards in, in conjunction with the county, and I think historically that's been a, that has been the case. We've donated a lot of time and effort to establish and maintain the roadway between Devil's Gate and the camp gates. And at, at a point, we were somewhat reprimanded for that, which I don't understand. So I guess my concern, the last question I have to the commission is, who owns the road from the White, White Rock Cut Off, from the Willard Peak Road over to the Avon Liberty Cut Off Road?
Wasn't that my question? To these gentlemen?
Kind of a question for the service, I believe.
Okay.
It may, maybe goes through some private land, but I think it'd be Forest Service or corporate private land, it goes, that road goes across.
You, you can speak when he's through.
So as we, as we've established and done some roadwork and reestablished that roadway across there, we, we did get some participation from the County, County Road Group, and we appreciate that. In return, you know, the comment was made, "Well, you can't really legally be doing this, because that's a county road." So I guess I was just trying to make sure that I understand who has ownership of it, and if we provide and, and donate materials, time, and labor to restore the road, whose permission, I would have to have to do that. So that sounds, that, I guess, clear?
Well, if you're working on a county road, if it's a county road, we've been asked to pay, we're getting money for Class B, then if you start to do stuff on it, then yes, we need to have you work through the County Roads Department. We can't have you going out and just doing it on your own. It's even like the $900,000 that we talked about. If you go out and you say, "Hey, you hire company," well, then we're gonna have to have you come back in and say, "Well, we got private land, and maybe we have to figure out a way, we have to abandon that road from the county." That's one of the things we're, we're forced with right now, is we're trying to decide which roads the county is gonna patrol, which ones we're not gonna, we're gonna deal with.
To Commissioner Bingham's point, though, if that's Forest Service road, then county has no, no jurisdiction over that road.
Right.
Well, unless, unless they've given us the authority to, to have that as a public roadway. And that's kinda the thing, wasn't Selman's, that's kinda the deal with rock, the dugway? Which basically, it became a public right-of-way, and that's why we had to-
And it was pursuant to the Selman agreement, it was a public road.
Even though it goes onto their property, it becomes a thoroughfare, like through their property, and that's why we had to handle it that way.
So it is or is not controlled by the county?
The, which road?
The road that connects Willard Peak Road to the Avon Liberty Road. The road that connects Willer Peak Road to the Avon Liberty Road.
My understanding is, I, I'd have to check, Darren, is that, are we, is that currently ours?
It's a right-of-way.
It's a current right-of-way, it's a current county right-of-way.
For the public.
Yeah.
County right-of-way.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. This gentleman had something he wanted to talk about.
Just real quick, Vernon Warner. I can't remember the date, but it's, it's somewhere right around the 2000, could have been before. The county called a meeting with Trail, Trail people and everything to agree, and they declared in that county meeting that it was a public road by Box Elder County. Even with the landowners all rejecting that, there's been a, the big white rock that everybody talks about, always had no trespassing, no trespassing painted on it. For years, there was a still cable, ever since way back when, when Grant Nelson, the cattle, cattle man that we leased the land to, put those roads in, he put a cable across that road. So when they declared it a public road, that means that Box Elder, in my book, and what we viewed as, as landowners, that it was gonna be maintained by Box Elder County. And I believe in that meeting, when they agreed that it was a public road, they took full ownership of that road at that time. The proposal that I make is, I think all the landowners ought to have a key to the main gate down there, just above Manaway, below Dock Flat. The reason being, it's not fair that a 52-inch or 50-inch vehicle can go through that gate and go up to my property and run all over it before I, I feel, or before the seasonal road closure allows me to go in. I would like to be able to have a key that I can go in before that date and make sure the roads are, or the properties maintained, or the gates are in place. Because during the winter, we don't know when that snow's gonna, what it does to our gates, our fences. We would like the opportunity to go in there and deem it now open to the public. I'm not saying that we'll control that, I'm just saying it would be nice to be able to communicate to the county, it's been dry enough that we can have now public coming in there. If they're not gonna destroy it because of the, the road's really wet, and nobody can really go in there. But I propose that it's not fair that people that can afford a four-wheeler can go in there, but I can't afford one, but I got a four-wheel drive truck, and I can go in there with my truck. Does that make sense? I think it's disemigrating against the people that afford can one vehicle, and that's their vehicle. So that's what I propose, that seasonal, seasonal, it's closed to everybody, but the landowners have the right to go in there at any time. So I propose that we get a key so that we can do that and check on our property from the winter.
So I have a question for you. That meeting that you were talking about, who was there? Was there somebody keeping minutes? Was there an agreement signed?
It was right here in the county, this, in this very room. So I'm sure there's got to be county meeting minutes that.
So it was a regular county commission meeting?
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay, we'll see if Marla can find that information.
Okay.
2000? You said 2000?
It's somewhere around 2000. We can go back through our records, I got day planners that go back, but unfortunately, I didn't look that up before today.
If you could give us a, a close date, because, I mean, when you have minutes, there are piles of minutes to look through.
I understand.
But we, we need to look through that, so we understand what actually is.
Yeah, what was agreed upon.
Well, we need to look at it and see if, if, if we can find that document, if not, then we need to create another one.
Yes. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Anyone else? It's broken.
Yes. I'm Emily Peterson, and I am also a landowner up there. And so my, my thing that I would ask the county is, you guys made that sign that we showed up here before, and then all of a sudden, around just after, a couple weeks after June 15th, it disappeared, posted and everything. So we don't know whether the county, the road department took it out, or if it was just a public person that took it out. But we need to have that replaced, and I would want to ask the county if you'll put that, have that sign made and put it back in place, because I think it really helps with the public, you know, so there are more understanding of the seasonal closures. And also, they need to know that it goes, that road transfers through all private property, and there's no trespassing, so you can't go off-road, you have the right to drive through that road, but you can't stop and camp, you can't picnic, you can't hunt, whatever, you know what I'm saying? And so the public just needs to know that. I, I feel like that's super important.
So do you have your, your private property marked that way?
Well, we all, well, and that's another reason, we like to go in before the public, because there's always signs that fall down, or fencing, or something that falls down, and we need to repair that and get it up before public comes through, because a lot of public just isn't respectful nowadays, you know? And I'm not saying it's everybody, but there's a few.
There's always a bad apple, right?
Yes, whatever you do, and, you know, like, if there's a sensitive area, you see the damage that they cause, but then they just go create another road on your private property, you know, and that's frustrating, you know? And so I think it's, I think we just need that, that's an important sign, but we also need, I don't know how to do it, you know? You guys made it a public road, maybe you guys should be the ones that go in and post it all the way around, you know, no trespassing, you know what I'm saying, until it leaves private property? I'm just saying, I'm just throwing out an idea, okay?
That'd be hard, we, if we had to do that throughout the county, can you imagine?
We can't even get you.
Can you imagine the task that you're asking us to take?
We, but we really need you to maintain it.
But I, and, and this is the thing, okay? I, I get, I understand where you're going, but you have to have some responsibility of your property, too, okay? Because I have property in Idaho, right? And there's a public road that goes right through my, right by my property. And so we post our ground so that they don't do that. I agree with what you said, but if I went to Franklin County and I said, "Hey, out of all of these developments up here, you guys need, because it's a county road, post all these grounds." So it's, it's.
I get it, I just said that kind of jokingly.
Yeah, no, and I, yeah, and I get that, and, and I, and I understand that, and sadly enough to say, it is correct that we have people today who are not respectful of other people, and we see that frequently, so.
Yeah. Anyway, and so, yeah, and we would just like to maintain the road, you know, because compared to 20 years ago, I mean, we could drive up there, like you said, we could drive a car up there, and now we can't, you know? And so it's just gotten a lot worse and a lot worse, and anyway, and, but we, we want to make it better, we want to, you know, and so, and the seasonal closure is really good because there's a lot of sensitive areas in that road, and when you get those people that go in and like to party, and they, they can do a lot of damage.
Well, we did have some issues with that road, and thank goodness for our roads folks, they went up and did some work on that road this spring, when, when they were talking about camps and stuff up there, so.
Well, but they only go to a certain point, and then they don't go any further.
Those two, the two guys that did that work, amazing.
Yeah.
Your time is up, this is her time.
Could we get the sign, could we get that back up again, this one, and then also the lower road that they're talking about, like, you drive up to it, and there's nothing on there? But if you had a seasonal closure for the public that said, "Hey, this road is closed from, you know, November 15th to June, well, whenever you open it up." Usually, it's the week before Memorial Day weekend, you guys usually open it up.
And technically, that's the problem with this sign you guys are talking about. If we post this sign, don't expect that gate to open before June 15th.
Exactly.
Because if we post it, that's a regulatory sign. I don't get to just arbitrarily go, "Well, it didn't, it didn't snow this much this year, so we're gonna open it on May 15th." I don't get to follow that rule. It's like saying, "Well, today, the speed limit's not 55, it's 85." We'd have to do a variable sign if we were gonna do something.
What about the key?
The key, I don't know, we'd have to figure that part out, but the sign, that's the only problem with that sign, is we've got to figure out, because the way it's currently worded, it is hard fast. November 15th, June 15th, we gotta have it closed, period.
Hey, but, but this is just the Devil's Gate.
I know, I'm just, I'm just explaining the one issue with that white sign, yeah.
That's fine, we're fine with that. We're talking, I'm talking the lower gate, you know? I just think that would be, because people drive up, and so if they understood, "Oh, this is a seasonal close, this is closed," I don't know, something down there below would be really helpful. And then, can we get that sign back up and replaced? Would you guys be willing to do that?
We'll see what we can get. I'll talk to the road department and see what we can do.
Yeah, we'll, we'll visit, see what we can do.
Talk to county attorney's office, make sure we're following.
Yeah, we just want to make sure we're following the law and stuff like that, but we'll look into that, see what we can do to help you guys.
Personally, me, I want to find out where the rule, where this agreement is, you know? I'd like to start from the very foundation, because this group could change anytime, and if we don't have something in writing, then we start with hearsay again. Hearsay gets us nowhere.
Yeah, we absolutely want to make sure it's written, documented, and that way, you folks, when there's an issue, could come in and say, "Well, this was the document, this is when it was signed," and go back, and, and if we need to go back and redo it, and do some other things that, because obviously, as, as time goes on, we, we have some changes, or maybe this isn't working, then we need to have a discussion again as to how to make this work and, and better served, so.
Yeah, we can help out.
Okay. Can we get this on? Oh.
Can you get it signed on the document?
You guys put it up there.
As soon as we get the other side of the agreement, we'll sign it, you bet.
All right, well, thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll make a motion, we close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Vincent and a second by Commissioner Perry to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item 10A.
I'd make a motion that we approve the seasonal road closure ordinance number 632.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to approve seasonal road closure ordinance number 632. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, item 10B, Sean Millen. Thank you, by the way, for your input, I appreciate that.
Sean Millen.
You knocked the little thing off the microphone.
I've got some electrical tape, I can put that back on. It's blacky.
I bet Chairman has some baling wire outside.
I do.
Zip ties.
Oh, jeez. All right, sorry, that's gonna have to remain on.
Borrow your mind. Sorry.
Jeez, yeah, that's not, just not staying on, thanks. All right, well, while my laptop tries to load here, I'm Sean Millen, I am the Director of Community and Economic Development for the Bear River Associations of Government, Association of Governments, or BRAG, your contract economic development. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you today, so I am here to seek your approval for submitting a grant through GOEO, the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity. There is a annual grant process called the Rural Community Opportunity Grant, or RCOG. It is an annual grant, if I can get my laptop to catch up here. It's an annual grant, but it's competitive. You're probably very familiar with the RCG, the Rural County Grant. This one is a sister product to that, and it allows up to $600,000 per applicant. It requires a county, the population and size of Box Elder to, sorry, now it's advancing too quickly, to have a local match. In our case, it would be a 40% local match that would be required for any amount that is awarded, and you have a 24-month term to put it into action. The RCOG requires the input of the CEO Board, that is, the County Economic Opportunity Advisory Board, the same board that is utilized for the annual Rural County Grant. We met recently, over the last several months, but recently, we met with a firm recommendation to this body, the local legislative body being you, the county commission, for approval before submitting. This is their recommendation. Well, excuse me, before I get to that, let me tell you the priorities that GOEO has. These bullet points represent what they consider to be very important when considering giving an award to one of these grants. I want to focus mainly on that fourth bullet point there, which is the utilization of local finance resources in combination with a grant, that is, alluding to that 40% match that I mentioned earlier. And then, of course, they want to see that there will be jobs created and a positive return on investment. The application that the CEO Board is putting forward for your consideration is one of revitalization of some of our Main Street, our historic Main Street areas. You see here a picture of behind Main Street, just here, within a couple of blocks, and many of these businesses that are very aesthetically pleasing on Main Street have a slightly different kind of aesthetic on the back, but that's where the majority of consumer parking is. And sometimes, it can be confusing for consumers who don't know if this is an employee-only entrance, or question the safety, or sometimes even the parking and traffic flow can be a challenge. I have here the word "uninviting." So the suggestion is for a facade or revitalization grant, but in this case, the facade is considered both a Main Street-facing facade, as well as back if there's consumer parking. Here's a couple of examples from Garland. The suggestion is a creation of a one-to-one facade grant to incentivize the revitalization from the private sector. The 40% match in this suggestion would be actually a one-to-one match, should it be 100% to 100%? The idea being that instead of county funds from general fund, RDA, or anything else within your purview, that it be the landowner that provides the match, and it would be in excess, therefore, of that 40% match. So hopefully, would make us look even more attractive as an applicant. This is modeled off of a program that has had some success in Vernal. This is an example of the Vernal before, and you can see that it looks strikingly familiar to the photos I showed of, of our locale before, and this is after. Now, to be fair, though, this application is suggesting an approach similar to this, but this was a very comprehensive, multi-year project that started with a year-plus of stakeholder engagement and a third-party consultant that was quite a significant amount of money, and involved this block mainly, but also involved some other ones. This is, you can see kind of a, if you're familiar with Vernal, as I assume most probably are, you'll see that these planters that are on the ground mimic a lot of the hanging and ground-based planters on Main Street that Duchesne, Roosevelt, and Vernal have done for many years, trying to invite the pedestrian off of that noisy, kind of busy Main Street area towards where the parking is available. There are some other shots, but for the brevity of the presentation today, I, I haven't included others, but suffice it to say, they had scenarios, too, where you had dumpsters that were up against the back of the building. You can actually see that in that top-left picture. In the top-left of that picture, you see that there's kind of a job-site-looking trailer there, again, kind of leading to that aesthetic that isn't quite as inviting to your retailers. And in the mid-block of this, you don't see it here, but they had a similar situation. And by the time they finished this, they had put those in CMU enclosures, that's concrete masonry unit enclosures that were in the back, and, and again, just made it more inviting. So that's what the CEO Board is proposing for your consideration and for me to apply, is a, an application of $500,000 of one-time money to be used towards a revitalization and facade grant. I have some examples here in the smaller font of, could be used towards exterior building materials, lighting, signage, sidewalk and parking improvements, striping in the side, the parking lots in the back, planters, dumpster enclosures, and the like. And then, of course, I, I've included here a couple of pictures of what you're already familiar with, where you've already had some great successes, both in Tremont and up above, as well as Brigham down below, with some significant improvements over the years. And I would invite former Mayor Vincent to comment if he has any anecdotal evidence of where retail sales picked up as revitalization efforts took place. And not that she's expecting it, but I also want to acknowledge that the chamber, President CEO Monica's, of course, here, and Joan, too, that can probably give a lot more anecdotal stories of where, once you provide a, a more inviting scenario and aesthetic, your retail sales go up. So, in short, that is the ask.
Well, I will tell you, in Brigham City, quite some years ago, our downtown was struggling, and we did a facade grant that was extremely successful and really revitalized our downtown Main Street. We had several shops that were vacant, and so as we did this facade grant program, it
Um, and so as we did this facade grant program, it completely changed the atmosphere of our downtown Main Street. And it's been uh, very successful now, uh, we have uh, I would say about 97% of the buildings on our Main Street now are, are filled. And so it's, it was a great thing for Brigham, and I know that Tremont, and I know Mayor, I know Mayor Friedall, and I discussed this as well, and so I think this has, it's been a great project.
Question I have, okay, so I've seen Brigham and Tremont or Garland, um, could South Willard, uh, business in South Willard, or Perry, or, or Will, you know, or Willard, or Honeyville, any of the other cities, even Snowville, could, could those people apply and say, we wanna have a facade grant, somebody in, say, Snowville wants to do something, that would be part of this as well, they would be considered and could put their, their effort in. So there's not any business anywhere in the county that can't put in for this grant?
Yeah, the suggestion.
It's, it's not, it's not singular to one area.
Okay.
There was, there was a healthy discussion, and they coalesced fairly quickly, that they didn't wanna just see this available to only one municipality.
Right, okay, that's good.
And again, we, we, we addressed the budget realities that we're all sensitive to, that by having the match come from the private sector, the building landlord owners, you know, the landlord, excuse me, the property owners and landlords. Um, they're the ones that obviously get the benefit of their building being improved. Uh, hopefully that's seen as an increase in lease rates, or, you know, increase in ownership um, from tenants as well as the landlords that are neighboring properties. So it doesn't put the county um, on the hook for this, and it, and it helps to amplify private investiture.
I just wanna clarify one thing, I, so this is going forward, it's not, it hasn't, and anything that's been done up to this point couldn't be applied for this money, right?
Correct, they, they wanna see that the reimbursements are something.
I just, I'm gonna have to applaud, there's some folks in downtown Brigham City that just recently got together a whole bunch of businesses. And in fact, your vote photos earlier you showed, kinda showed a bad, back area behind the Brigham City buildings. They all came together and paid to have that whole area repaved, and it looks much nicer now, today, just the repavement made a difference back there. So I applaud them and their efforts, but I just wanna make sure that we, we're not gonna fund that project since it's already done. It would have to be something besides that going forward, so.
GOEO is pretty clear about that in their messaging, but yeah, thank you.
And some of that, uh, Commissioner, uh, I would have to talk to Paul Arson, but I believe some of that was actually facade grant from Brigham City as well.
So Sean, what do you need from us?
A vote, gentlemen, if you agree with the CEO Board's recommendations, then I just need a vote from you that I can proceed with the application and get that submitted to GOEO, and presumably sometime in December. If uh, we use the last couple of years as an example, a benchmark, I should know the award.
So you're saying that the tenant, the private property owner's gonna be matching the funds?
Yep, that's where the match would be, and I'd put that in the application, that that's where the 40% required match comes from.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve for the Rural Community Opportunity Grant application as presented by Sean Mill.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Vincent and a second by Commissioner Perry to approve and give approval for the Rural Community Opportunity Grant application, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, Byron.
Byron Southwick, County Risk Manager, and this is something we do every year, that we have a, that we appoint a representative and an alternate representative for USIP, our Utah County's indemnity pool. Um, in the years past, it's been Steve is one of the representatives and Jenica is the alternate. I don't know if we wanna go with that saying.
Well, I, I'm currently serving, both Martha and I are both serving on the USIP Board. So what I was gonna recommend is that we put myself on there, and then you, and then you as our representatives for this year, since we're moving forward, and I'm already on that USIP Board at all the meetings, so.
All right.
So my, my proposal would be, in the resolution that we appoint uh, Commissioner to be the representative with our alternative, Byron, to serve in, in doing that going forward for this next year.
Do you wanna make a motion? Was that in form of a motion?
Yeah, my, that would be my motion, is that we, since we're already serving there and doing that, my, that we point on the resolution, the representative be the Commissioner, who's serving on the USIP Board, myself, and then also have Byron as our uh, alternate for that.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Perry to appoint a representative and an alternate, and that representative being the Commissioner, who's sitting on the USIP Board, and the alternate being Byron Southwick for the 2026 USIP Annual Meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, and then do we just wanna sign this afterwards?
Yeah.
Or right now?
You hand it to us, we can take care of it and get it signed and sent back, so.
Okay.
And have you already got the invite for that meeting?
Yes.
Yep, okay.
And so I see you email that to Ally.
Right.
So when you get down, I can get it back.
Thank you. Okay, Joan, your turn.
Okay, I'll, I'll give you back a few minutes, okay, 'cause I'll, I'll be super fast. Joanie Hammer, Box Elder County Tourism Director, um, next year, we celebrate America being 250 years old. And um, as a, as, as a state, um, we've partnered with some national folks to um, declare Utah an America 250 state. And uh, we're taking that another step, and would like to declare Box Elder County as a uh, as a Utah 250 county. And that just allows us, it doesn't really allow us anything, it's just kind of a, a, a fun way to celebrate, and um, we'll participate in some of the state events that they do, things like that, so I keep, I come before you with Resolution 25-22 to declare Box Elder County as an America 250 Utah partner. And ask for your uh, ask for your support and.
Hundred-year-old fair, now 250-year-old country, man, things are getting old. I, I would make, I would make a motion that we approve Resolution 25-22, the resolution of, for Box Elder County supporting America 250, and Box Elder County being a Utah 250 community committee, or community partner.
Second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to approve Resolution 25-22 to declare Box Elder County an American 250 Utah partner, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And that encourage everybody to, to participate in these 250 activities that you're gonna see happening in the county and in various communities throughout the county.
Okay, item 11A, Gina.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm just here for the signature of the renewed water contract.
Okay, uh, yeah, we just, it's again, same contract, similar contract we've had in your staff?
Annie, we did have a couple of changes that had to do with our pricing, but um, we had already talked about that, and Annie went over all of the legal and got everything fleshed out, so we're, we're good.
I'd make a motion that we approve contract 2577 for processing and disposal of wastewater at the landfill.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to approve contract number 25-77 for processing and disposal of wastewater at landfill, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item 12, public comment. Those wishing to make a public comment shall sign the comment roll and will be responsible for following the rules outlined in the County Commission Rules and Procedures. Speakers will have one three-minute opportunity to speak regardless of the number of items they wish to address. Speakers shall address their comments to the County Commission only. This is a time to be heard, there will not be a back-and-forth dialogue with the commissioners. Speakers may file copies of their remarks or supporting information with the county clerk. The county clerk will make the information available to the County Commission. With that in mind, we have one, Deanna Hardy. Just, just speak into it, it'll be fine.
Okay, Deanna Hardy, Brigham. The power to tax is the power to destroy. Our families are being destroyed by taxation without the consent of the governed. If our representatives are not going to listen to the voice of the people, it is incumbent for the citizens to take back their power and defend their inalienable rights. Rights are always retained by the people or the governed. The attached declaration is being handed out to citizens in Box Elder County to unite our voices and stand against taxation without the consent of the governed. This is the same complaint our founding fathers and forefathers were dealing with in their time against a wicked king. Our representatives are being unlawful in our day, and taxing the people without the consent of the governed. Therefore, we are uniting our voices and not complying with the 12.54% by Box Elder County or the 37% by the Box Elder School District. It was stated at the Box Elder County Public Hearing, that our county commissioners would not receive an increase in salary. But the report of salaries for 2025 showed that each commissioner received a $3,000 increase, along with giving all elected representatives large increases. The sheriff received 17,000-plus, assessor, auditor, clerk, recorder, treasurer, 4,000-plus increase. County attorney, 7,000-plus increase, judge, 6,000-plus increase. The people at both the county and school district public hearings were pleading for the commissioners and school board to not increase taxes because they were on a fixed incomes or struggling. Their circumstances and voices were ignored. Therefore, the recent tax increase by Box Elder County and the Box Elder School District without the consent of the governed violated the Utah State Constitution and must, must not be honored by elected officials in Box Elder County, State of Utah. Therefore, it is the right of the people to not submit the 12.54% tax increase for Box Elder County and the 37% tax increase for Box Elder School District. Therefore, we expect our representatives to remove the property tax that has been immorally implemented without the consent of the people, so that they may re, may remain in compliance with their oath of office and duty to their constituents. This amounts to clear taxation without representation, in this case, direct violation of the consent of the people. And you also mentioned about having things written down. We have things written down right here in our constitutions, the US and the state, but they're being ignored. We ask you again, please obey your oath of office, thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's the only one that we had registered today. So we will go on to the next agenda item, which is number 13, warrant register. Okay, um, that's all taken care of?
All our personal actions.
Personal actions, any?
Nope, we just took care of it.
Just took care of it. We didn't, don't have a closed session, so I will entertain a motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
We'll second it.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Perry to, Commissioner Vincent to close the meeting, and a second by Commissioner Perry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we're gonna change the tapes out, and then we're gonna open our uh, RDA meeting.